Okay, it's 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, please all rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
It's of America.
America.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Good liberty. Justice for all.
Justice for all.
Allegiance.
I think it was a little messy.
Uh, you know.
All right, we're moving on to number three, roll call please.
Campbell.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Sorry. Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Okay, seeing we have a quorum and everyone here. Um, we're moving on to number four, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Um, I'm gonna open the meeting and then, uh, ask for anyone else with announcements. Uh, good evening and welcome to the City of Mount Clemens' second virtual city commission meeting. I'm Mayor Laura Crop and I'm connecting to this meeting remotely, just like you are. So, so are the other members of the city commission and city staff. The technical side of managing this meeting is being handled by Patrick Linemary of, uh, Macomb Cable Network. The reasons we're doing this, uh, sorry, the reason we are doing this, we cannot hold a conventional meeting without endangering the health of participants and violating an executive order of the governor. We cannot simply cancel meetings because of the charter requirements and because of the need for city commission approval of many routine business items such as paying bills. The audio portion of tonight's meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. You can do, uh, sorry, we can do that because we are broadcasting it from the, uh, MCN studio rather than from the city commission chambers in city hall. MCN does not have the equipment necessary to do a live telecast from city hall. When this emergency is over and we return to the holding normal in-person meetings at city hall, we will have to return to a delayed telecast. Procedurally, tonight's meeting will be slightly different than a normal meeting. If you have ever participated in a large conference call, you know the problems that occur when two or three people attempt to speak at the same time. To control that, we will have all participants muted. Commissioners will be unmuted one at a time when it's their turn to speak. When you wish to speak, press or click on the raise hand button. Patrick will unmute you and announce your name. When it is time to vote, we will do a roll call vote and the city clerk will call on you just like in a normal meeting. When we get to public comment portion of the meeting, we will start with persons, uh, connected via the Zoom app. And you can use your raise hand function or we will acknowledge you. Then we will open the floor to those dialing in on a telephone. There is no raise hand function for dialing callers to let us know, uh, with, to let us know you wish to speak, so we will unmute everyone. If you wish to speak, announce your first name only. We'll do our best to put together a list of names and Patrick will call on people one at a time. When you are called upon, please give us your full name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Those of you who have logged into the city website to see the agenda will have noticed the new way it's presented. Instead of one packet file with all the reports, each agenda item is linked to its corresponding report. Clicking on the agenda item will bring up the report and related documents for that item. With that, let's begin. Agenda item number five, adoption of the agenda.
Common. And but then it said when it, then there was like a small part where it said, and I had it highlighted too.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
surveyed college students.
I think we're not.
This was a romantic relationship.
I didn't hear a second.
Second.
I'll second it.
I think we're not all muted.
Survey, that's what they said. But, um, and then the other one was, um.
Okay. Okay, we're about, okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the floor to adopt, adopt the agenda as presented. Um, does anyone have any, any questions or comments, Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
Any, uh, Commissioner Mensah?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Fournier?
No.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Okay, roll call please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, agenda item number six, public participation. Again, this is the time during the meeting that it can get a little bit confusing on a, on a electronic meeting, so we ask for your patience. Um, Patrick, are we gonna go ahead and open up the floor? Remember, we need your full name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, would anyone like to speak? Would anyone, uh, have any comments?
I have some comments.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Mike Zubas. And I live on 322 North Avenue, Apartment 1.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
All right, uh, I can start now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, great, first I just wanna say real quick, I support, uh, the adoption of 10A, uh, coming up here. I'll really, I'll be at the event in June. But anyways, I wanna go to, uh, my main portion, which is my new seven-point plan for the city on what we should do. Uh, to better the city and the government within. Uh, first things first, I really think that our city should change from the way we have now to districting itself out towards based on the present voting districts, similar to what Detroit has done. And maybe look at range choice voting, but really, the important part is the wards. Because right now, we, most of the people on this commission all live in the same neighborhood minus Commissioner, uh, oh geez, Commissioner Hammond, sorry. So, I, I really think that if we went to a ward system, it would allow people to represent the city on, in a more spread-out manner to different areas that have more equal representation of the city. Uh, after that, I really think that, um, there are certain things that we could try to improve the roads. I mean, outside of waiting for the federal government to give us lots of money, we really, I think there's an idea I've been fumbling around in my head and I think it might work. It's, we're gonna, we could try this with Avery Road. Avery Road needs to be replaced really badly, so I think if you find a way to work with Clinton Township in order to, uh, get a, get the state to pay for one half of the road through our city and the other half of the road through the other city. I know it seems like a silly idea, but I think if we find a way to work with Clinton Township, since we both border that road, in order to do a joint repair of that road, that might help it. And I really do believe since, uh, the attention was brought to me by Mr. Ford, uh, I feel like the road should be, uh, maybe honored or named after him in some way, shape, or form in the near future. After the road's completed, he always talked about that road a lot. I feel like that would be really nice one. Um, number four is, uh, I think we should really step up our recycling system. I know things have been really messed up ever since China, uh, stopped really, um, bringing in imports, but there are a lot of new technologies such as gasification and other ways to recycle that we could really look into in the near future. Uh, number four of my plan is to, is to get a Parks and Recreation Commission going up. Uh, after what happened with, uh, a couple years ago, I was at a meeting and I saw so many people paying attention to Sadie Side Park. And I went, you know, if we had a separate commission, they would be able to just forward these to the main committee or the main commission, you all, and then you all wouldn't have to, uh, uh, receive all these, uh, words and mess up a normal meeting and whatnot. I'd say that it's messing things up because it's good that people come out and say things. Uh, number five, I really think that we should try to get an indoor farmer's market somewhere in the city. Uh, most likely the old Macomb Daily building that might come up for sale in the near future. I feel like if we got a public-private partnership, like, uh, I don't know how we could work that with the farmer's market. Try to find a way to buy the building and turn the bottom floor into an indoor year-round farmer's market, similar to the way they have it in Flint. We might be able to find some success there and bring people into that building outside of that to increase not only people in the business, but also the tax rates. Because in the end, I really feel like if we bring the tax rate down, it's like building a baseball field in the middle of a cornfield. You know, if you bring the taxes down, they will come, so, um. All right, two more points, uh.
But time has, time has been past three minutes.
Oh, okay. I'll just, I'll just wait till next time then, thank you.
Hey, do we have anyone else joining us tonight that would like to participate? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to agenda item number seven, administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, there was no public comment at the previous meeting, so no questions were raised.
Great, okay, thank you. Agenda night, agenda item number eight, approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
I think that was a support by Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, um, Commissioner Voorhees, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Commissioner Mensah? No. Commissioner Fournier?
No.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
Okay, roll call please.
Fournier.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond? Crop?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, general business, 9A, approve the number memorandum of understanding between CEDAM and the City of Mount Clemens for the Community Development Fellowship Program.
Motion to move to approve the memorandum of understanding between CEDAM and the City for the Community Develop, Fellowship Program and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign this name.
Support.
Commissioner Voorhees, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Commissioner Mensah?
Yes, I would like to congratulate Brian Tingley on successfully completing the online application and bringing this fellowship to our city. I think this is gonna be a great thing. We have been sitting on that, uh, economic development position since last July. So, I think this is a great way to bring some, uh, somebody with experience and, and drive and training, and I think it'll be a wonderful thing for the city. And I thank Brian for putting that, putting that together.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, I agree, thank you, Brian. And I think it would be a good thing if you could explain it to our general, uh, city population right now, what that all means.
Sure, uh, this is a program that CEDAM started, uh, in cooperation with the MEDC. Um, and they reached out to communities that were engaged in the RRC, um, a program, either engaged or certified. Uh, this is the second year they've done this fellowship, uh, program, um, and it's really looking at building upon, um, what they've done with RRC. Uh, bringing in these fellows to communities, um, and matching fellows with, with, with different community needs, um, to tackle any number of, um, you know, economic development or community development projects. Uh, so again, we've been, we've been discussing this type of position for a few years now, and this is a very low-cost way, uh, to explore bringing in, uh, bringing in someone that's solely dedicated to economic development, so, uh, we're excited about it. Uh, that they're gonna be doing recruiting along with the, uh, the host communities from about mid-April through mid-May. Uh, hopefully with a, a June, uh, start time for the fellow. Obviously, a lot of it's gonna depend on what's happening right now, uh, with the virus, but we are excited, uh, and we definitely have a lot of projects, uh, for this person to work on.
Great, thank you, Brian.
Let me add, we'll get the fellow for 15 months. Uh, the programs, the grants worth a total of up to $62,500. Our share is 6,000.
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you, Brian, good job.
Commissioner Campbell?
It sounds great.
Um, I just wanted to add that, um, when that came across our email, um, I, you know, I emailed Brian with it right away and he was already on top of it. So, um, you know, it was, it was, it's a great opportunity and it's so exciting to see that it's happening, I think. Especially in the light of what's happening right now in the world, um, it's gonna be exceptionally important, so, so thanks again, Brian. Uh, okay, so roll call please.
Hammond?
Yeah, yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda item 9B, use of farmer's market parking lot, the North River Road parking lot for meals on wheels food distribution. Can I have a motion, please?
A motion to affirm the action of the city manager to allow the Meals on Wheels program to distribute food from the farmer's market parking lot on North River Road.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Voorhees, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Commissioner Mensah?
Uh, I'm really happy that we're partnering with the county on this. The, um, food program that's, uh, at the Vercoolen Building Warehouse has kind of run out of space. Um, there are a lot of county volunteers right now who are not working their regular jobs because of the COVID-19, um, uh, situation. And so we've got a lot of extra people doing, you know, food distribution, um, both at Washington School and out of the warehouse and then the Meals on Wheels. This is going to really help not only our residents, um, who are food, you know, dependent, um, but also other, you know, residents in Macomb County. I think this is a marvelous thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Fournier.
All is good. No comment. It's a great, great program.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
No comment.
Commissioner Campbell?
No questions.
Um, I just wanted to add, uh, when, um, when John Paul Rea contacted me about this program, um, it seemed like a real no-brainer on how to, you know, partner with the, um, partner with the county to try to alleviate some of the issues that we have in Mount Clemens in terms of, um, you know, seniors accessing food during this pandemic. And so, um, it was, it was a great, it's a great venture and I really wanna thank all the staff that, um, especially Mr. Johnson. I know, um, everybody at DPDW who, um, you know, just jumped on this chance to, to partner with the county and made it happen. Um, you know, set everything up for the county to just kinda move in and, and get this program rolling. So, um, during these times, um, things, and, and, you know, in government in general, things don't necessarily move quickly, but when you have a pandemic on your hands, you're, you're gonna force you. And, um, and this was a perfect example of just getting things done and, and moving, um, moving expeditiously. So, thank you for all the staff that, that made that happen. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Crop?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, agenda item number nine, C, approve purchases and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Uh, Commissioner Voorhees, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I have none.
Commissioner Mensah?
No, I'm good today.
Commissioner Fournier?
Uh, no comments, no questions.
Commissioner Hammond?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Campbell?
No questions.
Okay, and can we have a roll call, please?
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Uh, agenda item, I'm sorry, agenda item 10, consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
May I note before we go, go further that they have withdrawn, uh, 10A.
Um, I'll let me just add to that, agenda item number 10A has been withdrawn by the, um, committee, the Macomb County Pride Committee. Uh, due to the pandemic, they are, uh, canceling this event. And it looks like, um, you know, moving it till June of 2021, so, um, so we are going to take that off of today's agenda. So, it will only be 10B for consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Agenda, agenda item number 11, city managers' report, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Uh, first, uh, small business relief, uh, Mickey Weiss of the DDA and the mayor too, have been actively encouraged small businesses to participate in the Small Business Relief Fund. Been going door-to-door, uh, passing out information, and the DDA's grant coordinator has been assisting people with, with filing the applications. Uh, city commission vacancy, just wanna remind everyone, we have a vacancy on the city commission that will be filled at the August 4th primary. Uh, the position's a partial term expiring in November of 2021. Candidates must be 18 years of age, a registered voter, and a resident of Mount Clemens for at least 365 days prior to the last day of filing process. Packets are available at the city clerk's office, you should call first and I'll make arrangements to get it to you. Nominating positions require a minimum of 40 signatures, but no more than 100. Uh, deadline for submitting nominating petitions is Tuesday, April 21st at 4:00 PM. On clerk's number is 586-469-6818, extension 310. 2020, we encourage all Mount Clemens residents to complete their census form or follow the instructions to complete it online. We cannot stress enough the importance of making sure that everyone in the city is counted as it provides the basis for reapportioning congressional seats and it impacts the funding the city receives from the federal and state government. Uh, to promote the census, we partnered with Macomb Community Action to offer free boxed lunches, uh, on two dates, uh, which that report was just approved in the consent, uh, packet. Uh, first one, I believe, is this Wednesday. Uh, that'll be in the city hall parking lot. Uh, Meals on Wheels, we just talked about. Uh, city buildings remain closed, most city employees are still working, like, almost all city employees are still working. Uh, some office employees are working from home, they've forwarded the city phone to a personal phone so they can answer calls. They also can access the city's computer system remotely, so they can look up tax, water bill, and other information. Uh, we're also using this as a training opportunity for employees to participate in computer-based training. Employees of the fire department, uh, are working under, normally, our DPS is working almost normally. Uh, they're practicing social distancing. Uh, our dialeride operation has been reduced, but it is still operating, uh, as of right now. Uh, we've gone from a quick response to an appointment basis. We need to call in 24 hours in advance. Uh, they're trying to limit the number of people on each bus. Uh, the drivers have been equipped with masks, gloves, uh, and we're trying to spread people out, uh, so that there's no concentration and that nobody's too close to the driver. Uh, finally, the let's move race has been postponed to a later date, they're possibly looking at August 1st, uh, it's, this is over by then. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for the city mayor here? I, I actually have one. Um, the only question I have is, um, how, and maybe it's actually for, um, our city clerk, Lisa. Um, for the April 21st, uh, filing deadline, if people have to, um, collect signatures, are we, is there any kind of, I mean, we don't wanna encourage people to collect signatures, do we?
No, and I think that that's part of the problem with, um, the filing deadline, but the state, um, has not changed that deadline as of yet. Um, they still have deadlines to meet for that August 4th election. Um, and people cannot, you know, when you have a petition signed, which you all know, um, you can't have them out of your, um, signatures. It should have to take place in your presence or in your circulator's presence. So, it's, it's a problem. Um, people could always, uh, maybe put them on their front porch and have people come by and sign them so they can see that they're signing. Uh, if they notify people they know to come and sign their petitions. Um, there's probably some, some ways around, um, getting those signatures, but they, they only need at least 40.
Okay, so at this time, we're, we're carrying on, but, um, obviously, this is a statewide problem that hopefully will be addressed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, that's the only questions I have, does anyone else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, um, item number 11, public participation. At this time, we invite comments again for the meeting. Um, again, please be patient with us as we try to call on people. Um, we will, uh, ask you to state your full name, your address, and, um, limit your comments to two minutes, please. Anyone?
Hmm, I wonder, am I allowed to say something again?
Sure. Yep. Is this Mike?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just state your name again for us and your address.
All right, Mike Zubas, uh, 322 North Avenue, Apartment 1. Uh, I wanna talk a bit about, uh, 10A, you know, I mean, it is unfortunate and I do understand considering, you know, the, the unprecedented times we are in presently. But I, I fully supported this and I was pretty happy to see it on here, so I really, when it comes to time for this come through next year, I really hope that this becomes approved. Because, uh, Macomb County for a long time has really been missing a LGBTQ community. And I feel like Mount Clemens really has that potential to, to be able to embrace people of that, because we've always been a very diverse and welcoming community. At least from what I've, I've been through and experienced, so, I feel like, you know, we're not, I don't feel like this will turn us into another Ferndale, but this would be really positive in the end. So, I, you know, I encourage next year, everybody to please support this again. Uh, thank you, that's all I wanna say.
Thank you, anyone else?
Everyone.
Okay, seeing none. Moving on to, um, agenda item 13, commissioners' comments, we'll go to, uh, Commissioner Voorhees first.
This is gonna be short and sweet. Uh, please take the time to, to fill out the census. I, I did it, um, when it first arrived in my mailbox and I believe I, if I spent seven minutes on it, that would be a, that would be a lot, a lot of time. So, please fill that out, it's very, very important. Again, stay safe, wash your hands, you know, let's do the social distancing and, uh, let's everybody be safe and smart with this. Uh, and with that, once a clemite, always a clemite.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mensah?
Okay, so I wanted to give a shout-out to one of our local businesses, Prestige Imports LLC, they're on Bellevue in the, in our city. Prestige Imports is an importer, wholesaler, private label, and brand owner of both alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages. After being, uh, after having a conversation with Anheuser-Busch, Prestige Marketing Director, Thomas Cleaver, uh, began working with Danner Distillery of Iowa, they normally make craft whiskey, but now they're making 80% alcohol hand sanitizer that has been approved by the FDA and the World Health Organization. So, kudos to this business, kudos to Prestige Imports for seeing the need and, uh, and helping with it. Um, uh, if you guys haven't, you know, don't know, PPE equipment, personal protective equipment, is in very short supply and that does include, you know, hand sanitizer and surface sanitizer. So, um, kudos to Prestige Imports.
Uh, thank you very much. Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, thank you very much, I hope everyone is staying safe. Um, I've gotten to know a lot of our neighbors as I've been working. I've gotten to know a lot of our neighbors as I've been working out of my yard, and I hope everyone else is as well. It's, you know, we have to look at the positives on this side of the fence, and I am thankful for all my neighbors and thankful for all the good comments, and let's keep it up. Thank you very much. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
I just want to remind everyone that the weather getting nicer, that the play structures and the parks are closed, and also stay safe and stay home to stop the virus. And that's it.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I just want to say I miss visiting everybody at City Hall, and I can't wait until this is over so I can come back and see everyone.
I think they miss you, too, Commissioner Campbell. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. I know that, you know, having a city commission meeting, although you could, I mean, technically wear your pajamas to the city commission meeting, it is a little, it's a little more daunting with the technology piece and trying to figure it all out. So thank you to all of my colleagues and to all the city staff for organizing it and putting it on and, you know, getting this all together. So thank you, thank you all for your participation and your work on this. I'd like to make sure that everyone realizes the impact of the census on Mount Clemens. We really, we need everyone to participate. It's not, it's not a difficult, it's not a difficult process, and so we hope that everyone will participate. We encourage you to attend if you would like more information on the census, or you just want a free lunch, April 8 at City Hall, the City Hall parking lot, from 11:30 to 1:00. Rep Bull will be providing the lunches to that day. And then April 22, at Shady Side Park, at 11:30 to 1:00. I am saying the correct time. Correct, Ms. Voorhees? 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock, thank you. And I want to say thank you to Ms. Voorhees, too, for, she made sure that all of the lunches were from a Mount Clemens business, and so that that's really particularly important during these times. So thank you for doing that. Speaking of a Mount Clemens business, I wanted to say thank you very much to Happy's Pizza of Mount Clemens. They donated, they donated 30 pizzas, 150 breadsticks, four large trays of salad, and a lot of smiles to McLaren Hospital about a week ago. So they did a really great job getting, lifting the spirits of the frontline workers at McLaren Hospital. So thank you to them, and I would encourage everyone to go get a pizza and thank them for that great gesture. I wanted to remind everyone that although we can go outside with our families or those people we are quarantined with, we are not supposed to be gathering still. And I know that as a person who loves people, that's probably one of the most difficult things in a time like this, because we want to seek out other people, because it's such a tough situation that we're all going through, but people are dying, and we need to stop the spread of this virus. In McComb County today, there were 2,066 cases alone and 83 deaths to date. In Mount Clemens, we had 52 confirmed cases so far. In the state, there were 5,718 cases, and that's 617 people have died from this. 80% of the cases in Michigan are in southeast Michigan. We need to all cooperate. So if your church is putting on services, please, I beg you, don't go. Stay home, stay safe, save lives. If your friends are getting together, stay home. It's very important to follow the orders of the governor. With that, I would like to make sure that everyone stays safe, and again, thank all of our employees of the city that are doing a fantastic job keeping the city running and trying to keep everyone in Mount Clemens safe. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Going to support it?
I think we're all good in that one.
All right, we'll do a roll call, since we can. Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
With that, we say goodnight. Thank you.